I'd like to call this meeting of your Newark City Council in order. A lot of people's called.
Mr. Marmee.
President.
Mr. Rath.
Here.
Mr. Blake.
Here.
Mr. Bub.
Here.
Mr. Cos.
Here.
Mr. Fennell.
Here.
Mr. Fraser.
President.
Ms. Hall.
Here.
Mr. Labutus.
Here.
And Mr. Lang.
Here.
We have everyone either present or here this evening. Please rise and join us in the invocation by Mr. Blake, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Make a bow to your heads. Precious Lord, we welcome you into this space. We thank you for the many blessings bestowed upon us as leaders of the city and as citizens of this community. We thank you for allowing us to come together to make decisions on behalf of the people of Newark, but we also pray for those in the path of storms and hurricanes, and we pray for our brothers and sisters in the Carolinas. We thank you for all your blessings and forever be with us. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Blake. Could you please join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda, we have caucus. That's a talk of council. Discuss anything pertaining to the agenda tonight. Do we have anything? Okay. Now we'll move on to the minutes of our September 4, 2018 meeting. Is there a motion to approve this? Question by Mr. Labutus.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cos. Falls in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
On the same side? That passes. Thank you. We have three reports this evening from standing committees. One from finance, one from service, and one from capital improvements. Without objection, those will be received and filed. Reports from city officials tonight. We have one from our award-winning auditor, Stephen Johnson, the operating report for the period ending August 31, 2018, and Barb Jobs, our city tax administrator, income tax reports for the period ending August 31, 2018. Without objection, those will be received and filed. I added that award-winning since you were here tonight, Mr. John.
I appreciate that.
Next, under communications, we have one from ACLU, a letter regarding Section 648.14 of Newark's qualified ordinances with respect to panhandling. That's been referred over to the law director for conversation. Next on the agenda, we have comments from citizens. There are two times for comments from citizens. One is now and one is after the legislation. This is not a debate with council. This is just your opportunity to be heard. If anyone would like to speak, please raise your hand, and we'll call you up. One of you two would like to come on up? If you'll give us your name and address for the record, please.
Hey, how you guys doing today? John Sweeney.
Address?
727 Garfield Avenue, Newark, Ohio.
Thank you.
Hey, I owned a property down on Wilson Street for 33 years, and I've been fighting cockroaches down there since July 17 on another property owner, and it hasn't got any better. There's been about approximately a million cockroaches there when I started this, and got phone calls this morning that it's continually going on. I contacted the guy who sprayed the house Friday. He's only been there two times in the two-month period. He admitted me today that the homeowner didn't want to spend no more money and that he could do other stuff to take this matter into what we need to be over with, because the way I'm understanding it, it's a major catastrophe, but if everyone would have pulled together, we could have had this cleaned up within about a two-week period roughly. And hey, there's a lot of businesses and there's a lot of houses that have been completely devastated over this in this two-month period. And like I tell you back, I don't think this issue will be over.
Okay. What was that address on Wilson Street?
That address would be 96 Wilson Street. The house that I've owned for 33 years is 102 Wilson Street.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes.
My name's Elizabeth Livingston, and I live at 102 Wilson Street in Newark. I'm dealing with the cockroaches that are constantly coming over through our yard, coming up through the drains. I have watched the property management do a terrible job of trying to or attempting to clean it out. Took them a month to clean it out before they could even get a sprayer there. And then after they spray, it just makes them come out even more and come over to our home and I'm sure to other homes. The businesses we've talked to, they are aware that there is a problem. What they're doing, it's like if there's a leak in a roof, they're just putting a bucket to catch the water. They're not fixing it. I work for a property owner in the area, and I've spoken with him about the matter, and he says there is a nest and that it needs to be found and eradicated. I also think that there needs to be some sort of law for property owners to take care of these issues in a proper manner. What's going on right now, there is no law to stop Steve Inlow from basically destroying the entire neighborhood, and I don't know how you go about getting that on your agenda, but I would like to do that. And I think I'm done for now.
All right. Thank you. So you're the tenant, 102, and he is the owner?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else for this first section? Okay. We want ordinances on the second reading, 18-31.
Ordinance 18-31 by Mr. Marmee, Mr. Cos, Mr. Fraser, Mr. Rath, Mr. Lang, Mr. Labutus, and ordinance authorizing and directing the Newark City Safety Director to certify to the Licking County Auditor the sum of $255,532.37 incurred by the Newark City Property Maintenance Division with respect to property maintenance violations to be placed as a lien upon certain parcels of real property situated in the city of Newark, Ohio.
You've heard the second reading of 18-31. What does your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Rath.
Like to make a motion to adopt 18-31.
Motion by Mr. Rath.
Second.
Second by Mr. Fraser. Is there any discussion on 18-31? See none, all, please call the roll vote.
Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Rath.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Mr. Fennell.
Yes.
Mr. Fraser.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Labutus.
Yes.
And Mr. Lang.
Yes.
18-31 passes 10-0. Next, we go to ordinances on the first reading, 18-32.
Ordinance 18-32 by Mr. Marmee, Mr. Cos, Mr. Lang, Mr. Rath, Mr. Fraser. It's an ordinance to provide for the issuance of $5 million of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of refunding outstanding bond anticipation notes previously issued for the purpose of paying the cost of replacement of water main and service lines and all necessary abertinances, including but not limited to hydrant valves and fittings, and to provide additional funds to pay for other water system improvements and declaring an emergency.
18-32 is on its first reading, but it is an emergency. What does your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Marmee?
Make a motion to adopt ordinance 18-32.
Second. Motion by Mr. Marmee, second by Mr. Fraser. Is there any discussion on 18-32? See none, all, please call the roll vote.
Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Rath.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Mr. Fennell.
Yes.
Mr. Fraser.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Labutus.
Yes.
And Mr. Lang.
Yes.
18-32 passes 10-0. Next resolutions on the second reading, 18-70.
Resolution 18-70 by Mr. Marmee, Mr. Cos, Mr. Fraser, Mr. Rath, Mr. Lang, Mr. Labutus. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
You've heard the second reading of 18-70. What does your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Marmee?
Make a motion to adopt resolution 18-70.
Motion by Mr. Marmee, second by Mr. Cos. Is there any discussion on 18-70? See none, all, please call the roll vote.
Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Rath.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Mr. Fennell.
Yes.
Mr. Fraser.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Labutus.
Yes.
And Mr. Lang.
Yes.
18-72 passes 10-0. Next on the first reading, we have 18-73.
Resolution 18-73 by Mr. Rath, Mr. Cos, Mr. Labutus, and Mr. Fraser. A resolution authorizing and directing the Director of Public Service to enter into a lease purchase agreement for the lease purchase of one ladder truck for use by the Division of Fire.
18-73.
Mr. President.
Mr. Rath.
Like to make a motion to waive the two-day reading rule.
Second. Motion to waive the two-day reading rule by Mr. Rath, second by Mr. Fraser. Is there any other discussion on 18-73? See none, all, please call the roll vote.
Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Rath.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Mr. Fennell.
Yes.
Mr. Fraser.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Labutus.
Yes.
And Mr. Lang.
Yes.
18-73 passes 10-0. Next on the first reading, we have 18-74.
Resolution 18-74 by Mr. Marmee, Mr. Cos, Mr. Rath, Mr. Labutus, Mr. Lang, and Mr. Fraser. A resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service to prepare and submit applications to participate in Ohio Public Works Commission State Capital Improvements Program and to execute contracts as required.
18-74 will be held two weeks for our next reading, for the next meeting. And next, we have 18-75.
Resolution 18-75 by Mr. Marmee, Mr. Lang, Mr. Cos, and Mr. Rath. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
18-75. Mr. Marmee?
Make a motion to waive the two-day reading rule on 18-75.
Motion to waive the two-day reading rule by Mr. Marmee.
Second.
Second by Mr. Fraser. Mr. Marmee?
Yes, we have some debts that we actually have to pay immediately, so all of these items fall under that category.
Thank you, Mr. Marmee. All of us call the roll and waive the two-day reading rule.
Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Rath.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Mr. Fennell.
Yes.
Mr. Fraser.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Labutus.
Yes.
And Mr. Lang.
Yes.
18-73 passes 10-0. Next on the first reading, we have 18-73.
Resolution 18-73 by Mr. Rath, Mr. Cos, Mr. Labutus, and Mr. Fraser. A resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service to prepare and submit applications to participate in Ohio Public Works Commission State Capital Improvements Program and to execute contracts as required.
18-74 will be held two weeks for our next reading, for the next meeting. And next, we have 18-75.
Resolution 18-75 by Mr. Marmee, Mr. Lang, Mr. Cos, and Mr. Rath. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
18-75. Mr. Marmee?
Make a motion to waive the two-day reading rule on 18-75.
Motion to waive the two-day reading rule by Mr. Marmee.
Second.
Second by Mr. Fraser. Mr. Marmee?
Yes, we have some debts that we actually have to pay immediately, so all of these items fall under that category.
Thank you, Mr. Marmee. All of us call the roll and waive the two-day reading rule.
Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Rath.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Mr. Fennell.
Yes.
Mr. Fraser.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Labutus.
Yes.
And Mr. Lang.
Yes.
18-75 passes 10-0. And finally tonight, we have on the first reading, 18-76.
Resolution 18-76 by Mr. Rath, Mr. Cos, Mr. Labutus, Mr. Lang, and Mr. Fraser. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
18-75. Mr. Marmee?
Make a motion to waive the two-day reading rule on 18-75.
Motion to waive the two-day reading rule by Mr. Marmee.
Second.
Second by Mr. Fraser. Mr. Marmee?
Yes, we have some debts that we actually have to pay immediately, so all of these items fall under that category.
Thank you, Mr. Marmee. All of us call the roll and waive the two-day reading rule.
Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Rath.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cos. Mr. Fennell.
Yes.
Mr. Fraser.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Labutus.
Yes.
And Mr. Lang.
Yes.
18-75 passes 10-0. And finally tonight, we have on the first reading, 18-76.
Resolution 18-76 by Mr. Rath, Mr. Cos, Mr. Labutus, Mr. Lang, and Mr. Fraser. A resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service to prepare and submit applications to participate in Ohio Public Works Commission State Capital Improvements Program and to execute contracts as required.
18-74 will be held two weeks for our next reading, for the next meeting. And next, we have 18-75.
Resolution 18-75 by Mr. Marmee, Mr. Lang, Mr. Cos, and Mr. Rath. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
18-75. Mr. Marmee?
Make a motion to waive the two-day reading rule on 18-75.
Motion to waive the two-day reading rule by Mr. Marmee.
Second.
Second by Mr. Fraser. Mr. Marmee?
Yes, we have some debts that we actually have to pay immediately, so all of these items fall under that category.
Thank you, Mr. Marmee. All of us call the roll and waive the two-day reading rule.
Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Rath.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Mr. Fennell.
Yes.
Mr. Fraser.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Labutus.
Yes.
And Mr. Lang.
Yes.
18-73 passes 10-0. Next on the first reading, we have 18-74.
Resolution 18-74 by Mr. Marmee, Mr. Cos, Mr. Labutus, Mr. Lang, and Mr. Fraser. A resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service to prepare and submit applications to participate in Ohio Public Works Commission State Capital Improvements Program and to execute contracts as required.
18-74 will be held two weeks for our next reading, for the next meeting. And next, we have 18-75.
Resolution 18-75 by Mr. Marmee, Mr. Lang, Mr. Cos, and Mr. Rath. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
18-75. Mr. Marmee?
Make a motion to waive the two-day reading rule on 18-75.
Motion to waive the two-day reading rule by Mr. Marmee.
Second.
Second by Mr. Fraser. Mr. Marmee?
Yes, we have some debts that we actually have to pay immediately, so all of these items fall under that category.
Thank you, Mr. Marmee. All of us call the roll and waive the two-day reading rule.
Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Rath.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Mr. Fennell.
Yes.
Mr. Fraser.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Labutus.
Yes.
And Mr. Lang.
Yes.
18-73 passes 10-0. Next on the first reading, we have 18-75.
Resolution 18-74 by Mr. Marmee, Mr. Cos, Mr. Rath, Mr. Labutus, Mr. Lang, and Mr. Fraser. A resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service to prepare and submit applications to participate in Ohio Public Works Commission State Capital Improvements Program and to execute contracts as required.
18-74 will be held two weeks for our next reading, for the next meeting. And next, we have 18-75.
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
And Mr. Lang?
Yeah, yes.
Thanks for participating. Thank you, Mr. Lang. Paying attention here. Two-day reading rule has been waived, Mr. Marmy.
Thank you, Mr. President. Make a motion to adopt resolution 18-75.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Marmy, second by Mr. Frazier. Is there any other discussion on 18-75? Mr. Lang, you want to go first this time, or are you okay? All please call the roll of vote.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
And Mr. Lang?
Yes.
18-75 passes 10-0. And finally tonight, we have on the first reading, 18-76.
Resolution 18-76 by Mr. Rath, Mr. Cost, Mr. Labutus, Mr. Lang, and Mr. Frazier. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
18-76 will be held for a second reading.
Mr. President.
Mr. Lang.
I'd like to make a motion to waive the two-day reading rule on resolution 18-76.
Motion to waive the two-day reading rule by Mr. Lang, second by Mr. Frazier, Mr. Lang.
Yeah, we need to get the equipment ordered so we can complete the project during this building season.
Thank you, Mr. Lang. All please call the roll, waive the two-day reading rule.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
And Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Two-day reading rule has been waived, Mr. Lang.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution 18-76.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lang, second by Mr. Frazier. Is there any other discussion on 18-76? Seeing none, all please call the roll of vote.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
And Mr. Lang?
Yes.
18-76 passes 10-0. And that concludes the legislative session. Thank you for your attention. Next on the agenda, we have our second opportunity for comments from citizens. Again, the same rules apply. This is not a debate with council. This is just your opportunity to be heard. If you'd like to speak, please raise your hand. Anyone else? Same rules, name and address, if you will.
Rochelle Voland Smith, 237 Violet Court. I read over the weekend that St. Vincent's has decided not to serve certain members of the population on religious grounds. And I feel that this is creating an emergency in terms of serving the homeless population. I talked about it a bit last meeting and found that our city has decided to only do this on an emergency basis, and I consider this an emergency. Our homeless population has been underserved anyway. This is probably going to be an extremely cold winter, not that we have warm ones. But I think we need to brainstorm about this, about various options. I have a number of ideas myself. And I would like to see this addressed and open to the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Moran?
Paul Moran, 63 North Fourth Street. I'll address a few things here. I've noticed an increase in more and more downtown businesses closing up. There's a series of empty storefronts all over downtown. A women's clothing shop here on North Fourth is gone. The new antique shop on South Third is gone. And now we've lost the Newark Monument Company on 17th South Park Place, which has served for generations, ever since 1877, they've been part of the community. And I see it as a great loss. You know, people want to order headstone or make some type of arrangements and stuff. They can't no more because they're not there, they're gone, they're closed. It's just unfortunate that we keep losing so many businesses down here. I don't know what it always is, whether it's a business matter or just lack of funds or business, and it's hard to say, I don't know. Now, I know, I'm familiar with this homeless population. It's really boomed this year downtown. It's unfortunate, I don't know where they're all coming from, but I notice no matter where you walk downtown, you're going to see clothing articles laying around, shirts, shoes, hats, on sidewalks, benches, flower planters. There's clothing everywhere laying around. I mean, I don't know how we're going to address this issue. I think I see it getting worse and worse. I am familiar with the pain handling of, I know a couple at least have asked for money. So it is all factual, all this stuff is going on. It says something's got to be done, work with these people or get them back on their feet or something. It's hard to say what their situations are. I'm sure each one of them's different. You know, some might be criminal, some might be in a fortunate situation, went through a divorce and lost everything. I mean, I don't know, we don't know. We'd have to talk to each one of them individually, find out what's happening. But I think there should be a committee of some type to work with these people from different organizations to meet and get here together and help them, get them on their feet and get them off streets. So we're seeing clothing laying around everywhere. You get all this money that was spent, upgrade downtown, and it's looking half crappy because of this. And, you know, I attended those open houses yesterday, the county had, I know the mayor, and Mr. Blake both saw me there. I was at the courthouse, also went to the Rutgers Building. Rutgers Building's quite an impressive place. I don't know if you guys made it there or not. It's really something to go see there behind the child support building, right in the back. I encourage everyone to go check it out. It's really worth going through that place. But yeah, it's beautiful weather and it's odd seeing the courthouse with two elevators. It's just odd to see that. Brand-new one and the other one. It was quite a day, there's some beautiful tile, floorwork in that courthouse. Homework, they would do more of this kind of stuff, you know. Some more people have the opportunity to see our public buildings. Maybe City Hall could do something like that or something, a county building. You know, be more inviting to the people. Nice, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rath. Any city officials? Mr. Marmy?
Yeah, just briefly, I was asked, excuse me, of some of the city staff members to remind all the council members that it's that time of year again for the city to raise money for the annual trick-or-treat that they do each year and the money that they raise through a soup luncheon and chili luncheon. That's going to be held this Friday, the 21st, from 11:00 to 1:00, I believe, here in City Hall. Everyone's invited to come, it's $5, and the money raised will be used to help purchase candy to hand out for trick-or-treat, for safe trick-or-treat here in downtown Newark. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rata. Safety Director Baum.
Steve Baum, Safety Director. I participated in, represented the mayor in a loosely termed group, the Coalition for the Homeless. Let me run through some of the people that were there. I'm sure I'm going to forget people and I'll apologize to those people now, but Director Sassen, Councilperson Blake, representatives from the United Way, Jeff Gill from the Church of Christ, the Licking County Coalition for Housing, Chief Connell, his deputies, Daryl Evans and Chris Borbuto representing the sheriff, Bill Powell from the Veterans Association, Scott Hayes, he's done work with both the addicted inmates and the homeless. We got together and basically just talked and listened mostly, but the nonprofits are doing some good things. They're a little unorganized and maybe if we could help them get organized, I think they would be able to do great things, but they're doing a lot with very little. The homeless problem is a puzzle. It's multifaceted, but I believe that, for example, Scott Hayes has a fantastic idea to help address the during-the-day issue with some churches, volunteering meals, washers and dryers, showers. I think this is all good stuff. I think it should be encouraged and supported however and wherever we can. So that's essentially what I wanted to tell you. If you do get the opportunity to participate in this or support it, please speak well of it because I think that they're doing great things and we just need to help them a little bit, but more or less provide a little structure because I think on their own, they're doing quite a bit. If they ever get organized, I think they'll get some traction. Thank you.
Tell us what that group is again.
It's a group of individuals, but it was loosely coined, the Coalition for the Homeless. It's not a name, it's not a nonprofit, but thank you.
Thank you. Alder Johnson?
I'll pass.
Alderman Lauder, I have here.
Thank you, Mr. President, alderman.
Mayor Hall?
Yeah, maybe just to expand on what Safety Director Baum said, we are having a lot of conversations. We have a lot of good nonprofits in the community. They specialize in a lot of areas in helping needs of people that need that throughout the community. So we surely, it isn't a city of Newark issue, I mean, meaning not just the city as a whole. It's, we're part of it and everyone is. So there's been a lot of discussion at the Downtown Newark Association with the property owners, the business owners, a lot of different conversations to move forward. And I'll be involved with some nonprofit heads that will be touring some facilities in Columbus, a few areas that are addressing the needs of the homeless, so, and see what part of that. Sometimes we take larger models and kind of downsize them to fit into the city of Newark here, so we're working on it. But I'll be honest, it is going to happen overnight, but we do know winter's coming and we have compassion for that and we'll do what we can and work forward through that. So more details will follow. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Marmy?
Thank you, Mr. President. I need to call a Finance Committee meeting and without a pass.
Thank you, Mr. Marmy. Mr. Rath?
Thank you. I'll call a Service Committee meeting, alderman.
Mr. Rath, Mr. Blake?
Thank you, Mr. President. At first, I want to say thank you to Mr. Swinney and Mrs. Livingston. We talked earlier today on the phone and I did get your email message regarding, that showed the pictures and the videos of what is happening at 96 Wilson Street. So thank you for sharing that. Since then, I did get some information further from our Health Commissioner, Joe Ebel, whose department has been working somewhat on the, trying to address the issue. And I understand that another inspection is actually going to happen tomorrow morning at 10 o'clock down at that property. So I know that there's a lot of frustration with the issue and, you know, you're living there, so there's things going on. I guess just, I'm just pleased to hear that our property maintenance department and the Health Department, there's several entities involved that do want to do good and to correct the issue to the best of solution. So just hold on a little longer and things are going to happen. So, you know, thank you, thank you Director Baum for, he and his staff for working with the Health Department on the issue. So I know it's not appeasing that we don't have a solution right now, but just hold on a little more. A lot of people are wanting to help, so, so thank you for coming tonight. I also want to, I do want to say thank you to Doug Pass, but I do want to give him accolades because he and the prosecutor, County Prosecutor Bill Hayes, sort of brought that Coalition Housing Group together that Director Baum just spoke about. And I think it was important because probably one of the biggest messages I got out of that was, this isn't a legal issue, this is a compassion issue. I mean, that's the kind of the message that we got out of there, that I, one of the takeaways that I took. And I think that was important to hear that because there was prosecutors in the room, law enforcement, of course, our social service agencies were there and other interested parties. But I think people are wanting to come together to find a solution, to find some help. Because, you know, I, like I shared at the meeting, I mean, I know guys that I went to high school with that are living there and it has become, you know, visible in the downtown area, but it also, we have tent cities along the river. We have, you know, it's not just a downtown Newark thing. I mean, we have people living along the Licking River in tent cities. And so it's something that we have tasks and passion for. And I do agree that I hope, and I made comments, but it's at the meeting, but I think if they were to provide, if they, as in the Social Services Agency, were to provide some type of coordinated information at where even myself or other volunteers could give to the homeless person, like, did you know that you could go get a haircut and a shower and a hot lunch at Scott Hayes' facility? Or did you know that you could go to this place for this service or that place? So some type of coordinated, I mean, there's a lot of services, but just to be able to easily provide that information, I think is where we need to go so people can get help.